Okay, next we're going to go to regular council meeting. Stand for the pledge in a moment of silence. Senator Speaker, lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. They are cold. Cold hands, warm heart.
Part of that's our community and our people who have given us this town both in the past and in now. And actually, I'm here tonight for the town to give a proclamation to somebody that's done both, and that's to Ms. Willis. Come on up here, Ms. Willis. Dr. Joanne M. Willis was born on July 9th. I keep the date out. She's the daughter of the late M. Joseph Willis and Ann Hyland Willis. She has two brothers, Joseph and Lawrence, Anne, whereas Joanne is a 1957 graduate of New Milford High School and received a bachelor's degree from St. Joseph's College, a master's degree from the University of Hartford, a sixth-year professional certificate from Fairfield University, and her doctor of education from Nova University. Anne, whereas Joanne was an educator for 37 years and taught in the Hartford Public School System from 1961 to 1965. But most of her professional life, she was a teacher and administrator of the New Milford Public School System from 1965 to her retirement in 1998. Anne, whereas Joanne has always been a strong advocate and supporter of the arts and the rich history of the town in New Milford. She has served on many town boards and commissions and is currently the president of the New Milford Public Library Board of Trustees. She's a lifelong member and former president of the New Milford Historical Society, a member of the Commission on the Arts, a member and a secretary for the Board of the Burial Center for the Arts, a board member of the New Milford Trust for Historical Preservation, a member of the John Pettibone Scholarship Committee, and a member of the Marinswill Hotel Restoration Organization. Joanne is a charter member of the Delta Kappa Gamma Honorary Society of Women Educators. Now, therefore, I, Pete Bass, do hereby express the gratitude of the town of New Milford and thank Dr. Joanne M. Willis for all she has done and still does for the town it has very much recognized and appreciated.
Greg Mullen, please.
Greg Mullen, 39, Meadow Drive, New Milford. I'm here to speak about your agenda item number 10, Community Center Committee. I am a member of the Community Center Committee, but I'm not speaking on behalf or on the committee's behalf tonight. These are my own personal observations and opinions. Mayor Bass, from the beginning, has said that he wanted to do what was right by the townspeople and not what he wants, but what the majority of the people want, not what he wants, but what the majority of the people want. I hope you can set aside your own personal biases as well. I believe he promised to reinstate the Community Center Committee to make sure that the townspeople had a say in the process. He fulfilled that promise. In fact, he made sure that many of the strongest supporters of the former administration's concept of what they wanted were represented and gave them the majority of the committee. My belief is that was with the hope that we as committee could find a way to work together and to do the best we could to help inform the townspeople and provide information to the town council that would help guide you. I personally hope that you will allow our committee, with all of our differences, to fulfill our mayor's wish of reaching out to the townspeople and trust in the process. As stakeholders, the town council members that wish to help guide the survey's objectives will have that option. Since there are, since there has been much concern about our committee's ability to be unbiased and work well together, I also personally recommend that the town council have final say over the final survey questions. We all have biases and personal opinions. What is important, in my opinion, is that finding out, to the best of our ability, what the townspeople want and what they are willing to spend their money on. This survey is part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. The end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Next, mayor's remarks. First, I'd like to wish everybody, both here in the audience and watching on our live feed, Happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. So we're moving into the holiday season. I would also like to thank our DPW, our Park and Rec, our first responders, who worked tirelessly through our surprise storm. For those that were home and fortunate to be home, as you can see, we had one to two inches an hour. Unfortunately, we had the state DOT that had issues with their vehicles, which caused some problems within our district, as well as other towns. I thank the DPW for doing the hard work they did, even helping the state in some respects, getting some of our citizenry off of the state roads. So I want to thank each and every one of those departments for all their work. And we're just in the beginning of the winter season, so thank you. I'd also like to thank the New Milford Chamber, the Park and Rec, United Methodist Men, and the Garden Club for the Christmas lights that we see on the green. Beautiful, wonderful, great start to our holiday season. I'd like to thank Santa Claus for coming to our event. It was widely received by a lot of our citizenry, so thank you very much. And thank you for the town for allowing us to do so. I'd like to give you a couple updates on our roads. Mill Street Bridge is open. You can drive through there now. There's still some work to do on the rails and whatnot, but at least you can get through the bridge, and we're thankful for that. Long Mountain Road, Phase 3, weather permitting, hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to put the base course down on that. If weather is provided, there may be an opportunity to put the finish on the whole part of the road, but at least we're going to get the base done. Also, for Squire Hill, for those that have been, live up there and those that have driven there, we know how that road is definitely a safety hazard. That road was the one that we were trying to get done this year, unfortunately, with the weather. It's been 40-plus days of rain during the cycle of construction. We all know the safety that needs to be done up there, so what we are going to be doing is putting a overlay over the damaged, very damaged parts of the road for safety. We're going to be doing that on Wednesday, weather permitting, and that should allow for safety, allow for the safety of our residents during the winter. When the road gets reconstructed in the spring, we're going to use that when we reclaim the road, put it back into the base where it will still be used. But that way, we can provide our residents a safe mode of travel on that road. Next, I'd also like to let you know that we're working on the completion of the punch list items for Roadside Court, Blue Bonnet, Great Book, Brook, and Stephanie. These are all roads that we've been working on towards the end. We're working on the punch lists to get those completed. Sega Road is to be paved on Tuesday or Wednesday, weather permitting, so we're keeping our fingers crossed for that. We're also working on, with the Roads Committee and with our DPW team, we're working on our Roads Program for 2019. One of the things that we did learn is starting late in the cycle causes delays, so we want to be fully prepared and ready for the beginning of our construction season, which allows for better bids and allows us to do the work in a more timely fashion. We took some of the learning curves that we learned in this year's Road Program and are implementing it in this one to make it a better product. I'll be updating the town council at our next, at our December Town Council meeting as well. We also had public meetings on Asmatuck and Trinisky for the bridges, as we're looking at those bridges to be doing. We are going to be doing Mud Pond Road Bridge as well. So we're listening to the public and their input on how they want the bridges, what we're looking to do, especially in some of the rural areas, and we'll be updating the council on that as too. I appreciate all the members of the community that came out and spoke their opinions on these two bridges. We're taking those into consideration and moving forward. I'd also like to let the council know about the East Street School for the Connecticut Preservation Historic Trust. We put in an application for the $20,000 planning grant. We did receive that, so that's wonderful news. I'd like to thank our grant writer, Tammy Riordan, for obtaining that, and that's going to allow us to talk to the public in a very third-party, professional manner about what we're going to do with this town asset, how we're going to do it and have its best use that we can bring back to the council, the Board of Finance, and the public itself. Also, I'd like to address the public that we're already beginning the process of the budget for next year. So our finance director had talked to our department heads today and talked to them about getting their numbers ready because we want to begin to build our budget, and we'll be updating the council, the Board of Finance, as well. One of the things that they talked about at the charter revision, and it wasn't established within the charter, but I firmly believe in it, is that we need to keep our public apprised. So what I'm going to be asking is for a joint meeting of the town council, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Ed, where we're going to update our public in December about where we are as far as a budget, what are kind of the highlights and what we're going to look at. I'll be filling you guys in when we have that meeting scheduled. Also, working with our Board of Ed partners, we're working on our oil tanks that are being replaced. One at Hill and Plain, one at Serenoble, one at the Willis Building, one here at Town Hall, and the PD. As we've talked about before, by working together, we were able to see a cost reduction in the costs to these, so we're taking that and also looking at other capitals that we're going to need, mainly, as I've talked about before, roofs. So we've talked to the Board of Ed, and we're still in negotiations with them about the high school roof that needs to be done in a permanent basis. Right now, it was done on a temporary basis. Serenoble School, Hill and Plain, Northville, and the roof here at Town Hall. I'll be updating the council when we have a more definitive answer as to where we're going and how we're going to be doing that. Also, with the Town Hall, we are applying for a grant by the Connecticut Historic Preservation Trust because of, obviously, the age of the building. For those that came through the front door, can see our facilities committee did, our team did a wonderful job in scraping and painting the front of Town Hall and actually putting the name back to where it should rightly be, which is the Roger Sherman Town in New Milford Town Hall. So that's rightly put in place, and I thank them for that. Also, I'd like to apprise the public and the council as well. We continue to work on one of our major cost drivers, which is our health insurance. We're working with our Board of Education partners to do a combined health insurance, migrating to the state insurance plan, which would save the town a significant amount of money. I was at the Board of Ed meeting last, at their last meeting last Tuesday. I've been in talks with the chairman of the Board of Finance. We are going to be holding a joint meeting between all three boards about migrating over to this program, which, in some instances, would be a better, better health insurance for our employees and also a cost savings for the town and the taxpayers as well. Mr. Grimes is having another meeting as far as the charter, and that's December 4th at 7:00 PM at 25 East Street. Am I correct?
25 Church.
25 Church Street. So if you would like to know more about the charter that just passed, you can go to Mr. Grimes's educational meeting that he's having. Also, I'd like to thank all of our department heads and all of our employees for all the hard work they do every day. We're continuing to look at different ways of how we do business and how we can make it better for our taxpayer. We're going to continue to strive to do that, and I can only thank the employees for all of their hard work. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Item 5 on our agenda, the consent agenda. Move to approve all items 5A and B on the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 6, appointments and reappointments. Move to accept appointments and reappointments per the attached list, which you all have. I can read this?
Second?
Thank you.
No, no, no. Katie, we got it.
I got it.
Second. Thank you.
And just for edification real quick, as you've noticed, the ending dates, they are coinciding with the new charter change of 1/31/2020. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 7, update to the Director of Finance.
And before Greg goes into his thought process, I wanted to address the council on a couple of items. One, these sheets that were handed out in your packet, these are normally handed out prior to, the Wednesday before. They were not put in the packet, and the reason being is there's a, we had a new upgrade on our Munis report, and we went from, I don't know, what's it called now?
10.5 to 11.3.
And 11.3, if you were to take a look at these reports comparative to the month prior, you will see some differentiations and some consolidations. So rather than have this out into the public itself, where it could be a miscommunication, I would rather Greg talk about how these are now done differently and revisit this at the next meeting, once the council has a chance to review these numbers. Also, what I'm going to be asking is that we send these budgetary items out the first Monday or the last Monday of the month? We can only do it the first Monday of the month?
No, we don't get our statements in enough. The tax numbers won't be there. We get, typically, we get the bank statements, 7th, 8th of the following month for the previous month.
Because what I'd like to be able to do is be able to have a date where we could, where the council could definitely have a feeling they know they're getting these, and then what we could do is then, if it's during the beginning of the month or even up to the 15th, we would make this the second meeting of the month where we talk about this.
That's preferable.
That would be perfect. So that way, the council has plenty of time to review these numbers rather than giving it to them at the end.
Just a comment here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand what you're saying about statements of things, however, if our meeting were to fall on, let's say, the 20th, we really need to have them not on the 16th, when there's a weekend before we meet. The point being that we'd like to have workdays, weekdays, time to look this over. So I think we have, I don't know if we can make a hard and fast date of that, but I guess what I'm saying is, not off the hook if we don't have enough time.
I could send them out as soon as I have all the information and I'm ready. It could even be a week before the meeting.
Well, that's what ideally we'd like to have. You know, we all do have jobs, and so having a week before to look things over would really make it easier on everybody. You know that, so just saying that if you find that it happens to jam up, you know, we'll just have to maybe push it back. I don't know. Because without having sufficient time to see everything and think about it, what's the point?
I know. I was out last week as well.
No, I understand. I'd rather see it in a better format, but this, why I'm glad you waited, but you understand what I'm saying.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I don't have any problem.
I know it's not always in your ability.
I can get this to you, you know, as soon as the information's complete.
Okay, great.
Walter?
Don't put them under a jar because it's fluid, it floats.
No, we'll just have to say we need more time, that's all.
He needs the flexibility to do that, so.
I'll accommodate the council as best as I can.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yes, so is this the right stuff because this date November 9?
That's when the report was run.
Right.
But it's October, it's information as of the end of October.
But why couldn't we have it on the 9th?
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Today's the 26th, whatever it is.
I can, I'll send, I'll send it as early as it's available. How's that?
So we could do that, that'd be great, and then we'll always make.
I don't have a problem doing that.
Then we'll always make sure, moving forward, that we will be doing the finance update the second meeting of the month. So that should give everybody plenty of time to look at the numbers.
Yeah. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
The auditors arrived on Tuesday, November 6. Preliminary feedback is good. Everything is in order, and the auditors feel that we're on schedule to meet our December 31 filing schedule with the state. As the mayor said, budget season is approaching, and there'll be a couple of changes that you will see, namely, the probate court will be keeping their own financial records going forward. I already discussed this with the judge, and we're both in agreement. The only two line items they will have, starting in the FY '20 budget, will be the town's appropriation to the probate court for cost share on the expenditure side and the rental income from probate on the revenue side of the budget. So I will be creating two new line items to accommodate that. So it'll just be one appropriation. They're going to run their own books, they're in a different location, and there's been confusion and misunderstandings in the past between our office and the probate court, so this is a good solution for all. Also, as a result of the elimination of the ordinance that established the Waste Management Royalty Fund, all revenues associated with those operations will now be recorded in the general fund starting in fiscal year '20. So this way, the expenditures and the revenues are both in the same fund as they should be. Any questions? Okay. October expenditures are at 38.6% of budget. On a straight-line basis, the expenditures would typically be at 33.3% of budget. This is due in part to the fact that our pension contribution and some of our long-term debt is front-loaded in the budget and is not paid on a straight-line basis. Additionally, there are encumbrances of approximately $1.5 million included in that number as well. Legal other is running above budget, and this will be discussed in executive session this evening. October revenues are at 49% of budget. Tax collections are robust and currently are at 55% of budget. We received our first installment of the ECS funding from the state, which was approximately $2.85 million, which is 25% of the total budget and was exactly as expected. Generally, revenues are on target, and I see no issues at this point in time. Questions?
Well, it's a lot to digest quickly, so your general sense of this is we're in good shape, just a few books?
Yes, yes. Well, again, other legal will be addressed. That one is one that needs to be discussed.
So other legal's already over 53% spent and we're halfway through the year?
Correct. That's as of October.
Okay, cool. Then one other quick question was, we've been listening to all the discussions you know in the community center, and then one of the buildings they've been talking about is John Pettibone and the revenue it generates, but are we not charging for usage of that space or?
No, no, no.
Because we budgeted $5,000 in revenue and there's $0 to date.
I don't know who would be responsible for doing that, for renting the space out. So if there's no revenue, that means obviously there's been no rental of the space, or if there has been rental of the space, no revenue has been collected.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think anyone can go in there and rent because we haven't done all we need for zoning. Is that correct?
That's incorrect. The gym can be used, the cafeteria.
Oh, those are all correct.
The rooms can be used. There's a large number that we, that are used.
Paul, I missed your question. I thought for.
The question was revenue for John Pettibone. $0 to date.
Because there are no rentals right now.
That's what I was asking. I don't know.
We have the gym and, gym and other areas have been used this way.
Any other questions?
Looks like we're going to have an opportunity at the next council to ask questions since we just got this tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Next is the Film Commission. Update on the pass from the chairperson. We got an email later this afternoon from Valerie. She got her dates.
Somebody's here.
Oh, you're here. Is that, okay, great.
I'm on the commission.
Excellent. Okay.
Aren't you a fireman, crying out loud? Come on.
Good evening. My name's George Barnett, and I'm here for Valerie, Laura Mark, and the Film Commission. And just, do you all have her annual report that she's been backpacking? So I won't read, I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights. The two big things we did in the last year are the summer film series, where we had three films that we showed on the Green, and that was free to the citizens of New Milford, and they all had very good turnout, and we got very positive feedback on that. And then our big event, which recently wrapped up, is the New Milford Film Festival that we sponsor and we support it and do a lot of work at that. And that's been going on, I think it's, you know, the third or fourth year, and it's been growing each year. And town businesses have been very happy. They say during the week when we have it, their business has increased, and they've done a lot of sponsorships and really supported it, and it's been a win-win for the community. So those are two big events that we've done this year, and next year, we're talking about doing a couple of different things. One event we're trying to sponsor is during the week of the Oscars, either maybe Wednesday, Thursday night, have a social with all filmmakers in the area, whether they're directors or screenwriters or directors of photography, whatever. Get all the different people together in New Milford to hopefully they can all talk about the different projects, maybe work together, maybe generate some more film projects in New Milford. And we're always trying to, on our website, you see it, and in other publications, we're trying to promote the beauty of New Milford to film in, and we have a lot of pictures for locations for people who want to film. So those are the things we're trying to do, and we're growing each year, and that's about it. Are there any questions?
Katie?
George, thanks for coming.
Sure.
Do you, have you, or if you know Valerie has, reached out to somebody on the Economic Development Committee to have them come and chat with you regarding how they see you might be of use from their perspective? You know, because that's really sort of the function that should be at the top of the list. I know Councilman Esposito, for some years, was part of the Film Commission, and I think it's important that, and I did bring this up one of the meetings that I was at, that that relationship be broached again because the movies and everything are lovely, and I know you do your best to show up in New Milford, of course, but back in those days, we had a lot of, a lot of people coming to town, aside from, you know, just the people that live here already, but when they come to make a movie or make a commercial, and we had quite a bit of influx and. and we had quite a bit of influx and of people spending money and, you know, spreading the word in the world of commercials. So I just wondered if you got in touch with them, they might be able to help you with some outreach in that direction.
Mm-hmm, no, it's a, it's a great idea, and I, I know Valerie has it on her list. I'm not sure if she's reached out yet, but she will very soon if she hasn't.
Yeah, I'd suggest that, it's just, you know, when I came to the first meeting last year, I brought that up, and-
Right.
I mean, that is sort of the function, main function, I guess.
Understood.
I like your idea for the Oscars, though, that's fun.
Yeah, and we have another thing that we're talking about, is having New Milford students make short films. But in regards to the town of New Milford, try to promote the town, and the top film wins some kind of prize, maybe some filmmaking equipment, something, we haven't really ironed out all the details yet, but that's another thing that we're doing. But we'll definitely talk to the EDC.
Mayor.
Just to chime in, George, and thank you for coming tonight.
Sure.
When I first was on there, probably 12 years ago, it really was the focus of the Film Commission at the time as it was as an economic development driver. We were able to benefit from the 30% tax credits-
Right.
-which were a big boost to the Connecticut film industry. And we did a lot to bolster our, our website, which happens, at the time, and probably for many years, was, was under searches, was the top film website, it even had more hits than the state had. So I would encourage you to take another look at, as Katie is suggesting, using this as an economic driver. Because 40% of a budget of a film is called below line, as you probably well know.
Right.
The 40% below line budget is what they use for craft services, for location services, whatever they need, and we were able to take advantage of that. When we had Tim Allen's film here, Six Brothers, Henry Lefay, we had a lot of those commercials. They spent a lot of money in town, and the multiplier effect for that money is tremendous. It moves around the community about 3.17 times. So we had a big influx for a handful of years there, and I would, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I just glanced at your Film Commission site, and I'm surprised there's only 180 people that like that Film Commission page, considering so many people love the website.
Right.
I mean, we have one of the best libraries in the, in the Northeast. And I would encourage you to try to drive more of that awareness through social media into the New York City Small Film Commission Committee, you know, community. It's an hour, hour and 20 minutes away, depending on how you drive. You know, we, I was told point-blank by Tim Allen, Jenna Elfman, and all those folks that came through, we live on a movie set. You guys should be absolutely astonished, you know, they were astonished at the look of the town. They said, "It looks like a movie set here."
Right.
So as an econ, I look at the Film Commission as a wonderful thing to help promote people to get into the film industry here locally, but that's not what the money's for. The money is to drive films here, to get a piece of that 40%,
Right.
below line number on every film budget. You know, the talent gets the upper 60%, and the locations get the 40%.
No, absolutely, but you make a good point, you know, when the tax credit was there, it was a little bit easier, but we are definitely looking at that, and we are trying to get bigger films in there.
It does from locations, you know, I've got all these Silver Cup studios, and I see those studios and all those areas, and they're looking for close locations, you know, they load the trucks up in the morning, drive to New Milford for a week, and, and fill up some of the, some of the hotels and the restaurants and, and shops, would be a big help for us.
And one thing I will say, I agree with that, but on the smaller side too, the Film Festival, I was involved with the Danbury Film Festival in 2008, 2012, and there was a Kent Film Festival at that time, and both of those have gone away.
Yeah.
And now we have the New Milford Film Festival, and I think we have a really good opportunity to pick up the vacuum of losing those two.
I agree, I think it's a great, you know, great job of the-
And, you know, Danbury used to fund the Danbury Film Festival for many years, and they got in a lot of people and a lot of films, and I think New Milford has the potential, maybe not to get that big, but we can definitely grow and bring in a lot of good stuff to the town.
Definitely, thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Dr. Mill?
Thanks, George. How many years ago did the state stop the 30% tax break?
Uh, it's at least six or seven, it's been a while.
Any of the surrounding states, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, have tax breaks for movies, do you know?
I think they do, but I'm not sure. I believe Massachusetts does, just because so many, you see so many films, especially that have lost them in the last years, so, but I'm not positive on that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Item nine, personnel move to accept replacement of the senior center secretary to, ask me grade 7, with commission on aging office coordinator, ask me grade 8.
Mr. Belera, can you come up?
I have a motion, just for a second. Second.
And? Carolyn?
Hey.
As they're preparing, if you could see, there's a handout provided to the council members. This basically has some of our departments, and Councilman Hiddick wanted to know by having some of these adjustments, and some of the layoffs versus some of the hires, kind of where we are at this point in time. I'm gonna give the council plenty of time to take a look at this. But you look at the one that's highlighted in yellow, this is the one where you have the office coordinator, which is a regrade. This is already in the budget for this year.
Correct.
It would include, even though it is in, in the budget, the differential is, is to the positive $1,192.96, meaning a savings. If you look down at the bottom, it's a savings of, so far, when we're doing all these adjustments so far this year, of $72,799.93. But I'll let you talk about the senior center office coordinator.
So the office coordinator-
Paul, just, just to be clear, so the positive numbers are a savings?
Correct, the negative is a cost.
Let me say it a different way, so-
That's the first thing I saw, when I saw.
Under, under budget, it's shown as a positive, and over budget, so the heading, put it in parentheses next time, so that way the negative is clear.
So negative.
Under is positive.
And I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the schedule, I know you did on your report notice.
Yeah.
Appreciate you answering the question, yeah.
All right, so, but from a cost perspective, this would, because of the timing of where it falls in the budget here, it is a cost savings for the town, as this was a budgeted position already, of $1,192.96. I worked with Carolyn to update the job description. As a secretary to, there's been a lot of changes going on in the senior center, and the position we gave, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the position, and-
Just the, the body. Yeah, we made like 25 additions and changes in this job description that hasn't been looked at since 2000 by the town council, so it's long overdue, and she's been, you know, we have several secretaries who have been in that position, and trying to do the job that needs to get done, so the job description needs to follow the duties that they do.
Again, I took the recommendation to make all the changes and highlight them. I know, Dr. Mill, you wanted to see what the changes were, so I hope this helps. Is the highlights effective for highlighting what the changes are, so it's easy to track for everybody?
Yes, thank you very much.
So what do the highlights represent?
The changes to the job description from the old-
Changes. Positions and changes.
So before, they weren't answering and directing calls to-
Well, they were, but it wasn't in the job description.
Well, it says the answers to telephone in the other job description.
Right, it has the answers to the job, but what we've done is we've just elevated the actual language to this. So now, providing assistance to the public, finance participants, town agencies, and officials, instead of act as a receptionist, reading the public as a representative of the senior center department in a professional, current, as we have.
The other thing we're doing too is being consistent. The position of the coordinator in social services and in the mayor's office are all grade 8, and so all the language is the same now.
Carolyn, at the grade 7, they weren't working on the My Senior Center site, were they, the database?
They were.
Oh, they were, oh.
So then-
She, sorry.
What, what difference have they had in their duties from this year compared to two years ago?
Not much, to be honest with you, not much.
So the job description is catching up with what the work actually is being performed.
Exactly.
So at what point then did the work change?
It just warped itself into more and more, as someone is sitting there, and as we change systems and technology, they just adapt, and we never change the job description. My senior center has been there for eight years, it's not, never been in the job description. My senior center is a computer system user.
The volume of your appointments too, from the bus scheduling, whatnot, is pretty significant.
We have, yeah, two full-time buses, that happened in eight years, we have two-way radio, that happened in eight years. There was a lot of technology and changes in that, that gatekeeper's job.
And we've significantly increased staff over that time period as well, correct?
No.
No?
Changed a few people.
From five years ago? The Commission on Aging staff changed?
Well, we've added a chore service coordinator, which also prompted this change, because that is a grade 8 as well.
That's about $22,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the union never took exception to the change in responsibility without having written job descriptions?
We did not catch any grievances based on the increase of duties, but-
Okay, and then, you know, I have a particular affinity for not using the language demonstrated knowledge of, under knowledge skills and abilities, because I know a lot about a lot of stuff, it doesn't mean I can do it well, so-
Well, one, one got through on me.
Yeah.
Fair enough, so we can change the demonstration now.
Demonstrate ability too, would be preferred.
Absolutely.
So you're making that?
Yes.
Kate?
Carolyn, what would you say is the priority for this position? Key, key role, key activity?
Bottom line is personal assistant to, you know, there are over 100 people that she sees every day. She is multi-tasking, that position is multi-tasking, between the eight or 10 programs you have that have 10, 12 people in them, you have lunch that has 40 people in them, and people are coming in and out, wanting to pay for programs, wanting, you know, answering the phone, we get 75 phone calls a day.
And there's a lot of liaison with you and Jasmine and all of that.
And then, you know, the bus drivers are out there, she's got a two-way radio, she's answering calls for that, you know, sending the buses on, you know, pickups and drop-offs.
Is chore the only other program that this position has any access with, in or out? It's not, nothing to do with wheels, or not just the chore?
No, chore service is totally different.
I know chore, but you just said something about chore in this-
Well, when we hired, we were getting that position in, and we were looking at the job that it would entail. That was a grade 8, and then we were saying the secretary's position in the office is a grade 8.
I see, so you were referring to the fact that you're bringing this up to par?
Right.
Okay, I didn't see there was anything to do with chore here, I was wondering how you slipped in, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Works for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item 10. Discussion and possible action regarding the community center, request for funding on a market research study.
Is that a motion or just a?
No, it's just, I didn't make a motion, it's too many things to-
Pass this one over?
Yes, please.
I guess so, yes. Did you give me enough copies?
I need one more.
Here, pass one more.
And this particular handout for the council. Mr. Winters, who's the vice chair of the Community Center Committee, had asked town attorney, Matt Grimes, to opine on a legal review opinion or recommendation to any steps necessary to legally accomplish the creation of a community center. So Mr. Grimes opined on the legal authority, and steps need to be taken.
Mayor, just a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
This document's dated November 21st, which was 1920, that was Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Was there any reason we didn't get it then?
Because it was late, late Wednesday.
Okay, or this morning? It's just it's really hard for us to discuss something when we have to sit and-
Well, we can discuss it at another time, it just, we got it, I just wanted you to have.
Oh, okay.
Because it has nothing to do with, nothing to do with the thing.
Okay, then, off to society goes.
Correct.
All right. Good. Okay, so is there somebody moving on?
So, any-
Well, I'll make a motion, and if we're not having anybody speak to us, a motion to accept the Community Center Committee's request for the funding of a market research study.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, and we have a bunch of members here that, if we need to, can ask, we can ask questions, is that-
Yep.
Okay. I just, you know, I, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, because as I've said from the beginning, it's probably one of the most difficult groups to be in charge of, because of just the varying opinions and everyone going on there, so I'm, I'm not, I'm just not sure what we're gonna get out of another survey, and I'm not saying it would, you know, I'm assuming it would be a lot more detailed than the one you guys did, but I'm just not sure where we're going with this. We have, we, we've gone a long time without a community center, and it seems like we had, you know, we've had people from the library in here talking about how the new library's gonna be a community center, and then we've had people that think that, you know, Patty Bone being the community center, I, I'm just not sure we have, and I guess that's why you want to do a, I'm just going in circles here, why you want to do a survey, but it's, it's just, I don't know, just we've gone long enough without it, I'm just not sure if this is a thing you'd-
So, yeah, I've got an opinion on market research.
Yeah.
And very specifically, and I believe the discussions we've had in the prior town councils with the survey that the Community Center Committee did on their own was that there was a question of statistical validity, number one, and number two, the methodology. So if you ask somebody, "Do you want more services from the town?", it's like asking a customer, "Do you want a new product, and do you want a better quality?", they're gonna say yes. So you have to structure the question in a way, you're gonna get actual usable data that's not gonna surprise you. So that, in my experience, takes a professional firm to do. Nothing against what the Community Center Committee did, I think they made a valiant effort, but to make sure that the demographics of the people who answer the question, so for example, seniors tend to be home during the day, so if you're calling them, you tend to get a lot of seniors, you don't get the young moms with kids, you don't get the professionals, you don't get all of the different respective groups that you normally would, so that's the value that you have. So before you spend, I'm gonna make up a number, $20 million on a community center, whatever the number is, I think it's worthwhile to spend some money upfront, to make sure you get the features right, and to make sure we understand what are the trade-offs that citizens are willing to make. So to ask a question, and I think part of why the referendum for the library was such a success is that we had some meat on the bones to that, right? Are you in favor of, here's how much it's gonna cost, and here are the features that it's gonna have, because we had the detailed plans. People can wrap their heads around yes or no on that. Right now, if you ask them a question, the general population, the referendum, "Do you want a community center?", we might get yes, but then when the price tag comes later and we don't know what it is, and it may have a pool, it may not have a pool, we might be heading down the wrong path. It might seem like a waste of money, I have yet to experience it when you do it right and ask the right questions, that you don't get the right product that people want and are willing to pay for at the back end.
Well, I just, I guess my point is, people, when New Milford, New Milford was growing, people came here without a community center, they came here because it was the least expensive alternative to places south of here, and I just, you know, and, and, you know, I'm talking to one of the kids that works for me, and he's looking for housing, and he's talking about Washington, because taxes lower, and I said, "Well, the cost of houses is probably more, so it will offset itself", but he didn't say, "You know what, I'm going to Washington because they have a community center", it was, it was cost, and I'm just, I'm afraid that if we go down a route, you know, we, we just, we're doing a huge renovation in the library, I just don't know if our town needs a community center, I mean, if, if it takes, and if, if that's part of the question too, if, if, in the survey, if you feel this is needed, then maybe, maybe it is a good idea, I just don't know if it's, we've never had this whole discussion of a community center until Pettibone became the elephant in the room. And so I'm just, you know, that's my point, is, does this town need a community center? I don't know, we have it downtown, that's where everyone goes when they want to see the community. We have events downtown, that's where people congregate, we're adding the libraries, which is giving them a better reason to congregate there. We're talking about reverberant revitalization, the better, but those things, you know, are happening slowly, and it just, and it does get people to come to town, you know, that's where the parade is, is downtown. We're not having the parade over Pickett District, we're having it downtown, so I just, I, I know that, you know, so it's, it's, this doesn't, to me, it just, we don't need one, but that, you know, that's my opinion, and-
Walter?
Mike, I have to disagree with that, I'm all in, you know, and again, speaking as an individual, I'm all in favor- I'm all in, you know, and again, speaking as an individual, I'm all in favor of the community center. I don't know what happened over the weekend, I, I must have missed a day or two or three in the calendar, but I was driving south on seven, when I drove by Patty Bone, there had to be two hundred cars in that parking lot. I don't know what was going on in that building. Obviously, it seems to be attracting, it seems to be an umbrella bringing in things. And, you know, for the time being, then, let's see how this plays out without saying, let, let's throw it under the bus.
Katie?
Well, the question here is about going, spending the money to have a market research study done, and I wasn't a hundred percent for it, nor was I against it, however, I started to ask people, that some of them I don't even know, "What do you think about the whole idea of a community center?", some people have no idea what you're talking about, some have a very definite opinion, yes or no. But as, whether I think that this is the, I think a little bit we're putting the horse before the cart when it comes to the study before we even know what the cost, because as Lisa pointed out, you ask somebody, "Would you like to have this?", "Yeah, sure, why not", until you tell them what it costs, but I think we should go ahead and have a study done by a professional agency, I think we all sort of agreed to that, and I would like, my only comment about that is they've done a lot of work, I respect it all, I, I, you know, we sit here and do a lot of things and nothing ever comes up, and it gets frustrating, I'm sure you guys all felt the same. But I would like this to be handled the same as any, any expenditure that the town makes, I think we need to go in, I'm not saying there's something wrong with blue cloud...
Great blue.
Blue, great blue. I had that cloud on my mind, but I would like to see it go out for bid like we do other things. I'm not saying you didn't do, please don't take offense, that I'm saying, I'm happy to have the study done, but it doesn't really cost us anything but a tad of manpower and an advertisement to put this out for a bid, and then, as was already brought up before, uh, I think then we're just, let somebody who hasn't got anything to do with this, um, look at it and come up with the kind of questions, and, uh, to include people from your committee and the council people, but I think that step should be taken by our bid process, and then in that case, I'm all for doing the research study to find out what people really want.
If we're gonna do, and we're, I'm gonna say real quick. Mike? If we're doing something, I mean, these guys have a deadline now that's looming, if we push this off a little bit to do bids...
What deadline?
Well, I mean, I guess we can extend the...
I guess we can, yeah, I think we can. I mean, this is a very big deal that they've spent a lot of time on, and, and we've also spent that time also listening, and they've been trying to tell us what they want to tell us, and I'm, I think if we've gotten to the point where the last thing to be decided is whether we're gonna get a study done and spend the money, that's up to us being able to allocate the money to spend for this, but if we're going to do that, which I think it is necessary, and I was not a proponent, this doesn't have anything to do with whether your personal feelings, my personal feelings don't come into play here, I talk to people, I listen to what people say, we always talk about who puts us here, and if people who voted for us think it's a good idea we explore this possibility of a community center, nothing to do with that building down there, shall remain nameless, but then I think we need, I think we have to do that, that's why we're here, and if it takes a few dollars to do it, we do it the right way, we go through a bid process, we work on making sure we're asking, uh, the right kind of questions, and see what that brings, otherwise we're not doing, we're not doing ourselves any service either.
Mike?
Just a few things, um, I know that maybe this will help, Mike, that, uh, this is not the first library committee that was ever invented, but after, it took three and a half years, and this was our third attempt to even go forward. So the community center is not gonna happen next year, it's just not gonna happen. I like the idea of research, I like the idea of exploration, but what I'd like to see is, from the responses, how is the community center defined? Are we doing town stuff, social services, are we doing, you know, when I was growing up in Newtown, we'd have to sneak into the town hall to go use the gym to play basketball on a Sunday afternoon, wouldn't it be great to be able to have a place where the kids can go? So I think in the, in the responses, or in the information gathered, that if we could define the community center and what people want out of it, do we want it open to the public, do we want a pool, how much is the pool, you know, and be able to get some of the answers, and then decide if Patty Bone is the right place. Maybe it's not, I don't know, but I think, it's eighteen thousand for the study, is that right?
Give or take, eighteen to twenty, I think.
That was the last number I heard.
You guys got it right.
Eighteen, eighteen change, eighteen-five?
I think we want eighteen.
Eighteen-five.
So my opinion is, is, and I agree with you, Katie, and I like the way you phrased it, despite what I'm, what I'm thinking in my head, my personal opinion, you know, we, we owe it to the public to move forward with eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to get the, to get the research done and see what the community wants.
Here, here, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Paul?
Just, uh, I know there's discussion about the library, but I, I guess my question is just one of a pragmatic sense and practical sense. When the library project started getting momentum this last project, the, the momentum was behind having some, some real quality detailed numbers associated with what the renovation was gonna be. One of the things I heard time and time again from people, but years and years and years, it, it never got to the ballot, or, or a potential town meeting was, we don't really know what the costs are gonna be. So tonight, what I'm hearing is, the council's suggesting we go forward with a request to ask questions of the public when we have no idea what such a facility would cost. And when I talk to people, what's more important to them is what something costs and what they get out of it, as opposed to the idea of a community center. I think we'd be hard-pressed to find anyone in this community, we wouldn't want a community center.
But wasn't the original charge, Jeff, and you're there, Michelle, wasn't the original charge to, or what you guys got to, was to find out from the residents how they picture what they think a community center should be? Is that correct? In other words, you wanted to find out that whether they thought it needed a pool and a municipal office, or if it needed just to have an exercise room and no municipal offices, or a basketball court? Wasn't that the original thing you talked about several times? That rather than getting people to decide, well, whether they want something, they don't know what it's gonna cost, it was just to define what people wanted, and then from there, we'd go forward with, well, what do we have or what do we need? Like Lisa said, is it forty million dollars, is it a building we already own? But we don't even know what the residents think a community center should be to them. They, I mean, they each know what they think it means to them, but we don't know what they think.
So if you go to a taxpayer tomorrow, and we have winter approaching, and we know our roads are gonna get worse, Katie, this is an unbudgeted, this is unbudgeted.
Don't blame Jeff for our roads, he doesn't really think anything...
But I'm asking you, Katie, the people you say you talked, right? And you have eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, and you go ask ten people tomorrow, "Do you want to spend eighteen thousand five hundred dollars on a market research on if we want a community center or not, or some additional money to do roads?"
That's what I just said, is, I don't believe that's the question to be asked, do you want a community center or not? Paul, if there were to be a community center where you live, how do you, what do you envision that being made up? That's the way I envision the question being asked, if that was the question. Now, I could be wrong, but that was what I thought the whole point of this committee was, not to determine, ask every other person whether or not you want one before we even know what it costs, but to find out, what do people think it should be? Because some people don't think we need one, because all of the things they think are important are already taken care of.
So then we're asking the market research firm to do what we charged the committee to do?
Yes, because what we thought when they did it, if they admitted it wasn't a professional job, they're asking based on what they know, and then everybody thought it was, I mean, I'm not making this up, you guys were all in the room with me, that the, uh, a, a professional market research company would do the job that should be done on this. I mean, you can't build your house on shaky foundation and get a professional.
Before you build a house, you have a budget and you know what's gonna happen?
But we're not building the house, all we're gonna say to you is, what do you want in your house?
Before you build a house, you have a, you have a design.
So before you build a house, before you build a house, you get pre-approved to see how much you could afford, before you go and design the mansion, so...
Wait, wait, so, but at that point, you have a design, and then you gotta assess out all your options, because the price goes up and the price goes down, and eventually you get to it, so I'm gonna kind of marry up the different pieces of the conversation. So if you think about the library process, and I just had a lightbulb moment, so, in what you said about the cost, right, so you figure out what are the features that people really want, pool or no pool, then you get some type of design and cost estimate, and then you go forward. So there's probably more steps than we thought needed to happen to get us to a salient question that people can answer yes or no, and, and have a good feeling that the answer, is it gonna have some bad surprises in it? I think the reason we all rallied around the library referendum question was because there was a design, there was a clear amount of money, we knew where it was gonna go, and so you, you can say yes or no to that, as opposed to this, as Katie states, this idea, you know, nobody's gonna say no to a community center, but if we're gonna trade off for other things, it's one step in the process, and it's the first right step before you go off for a design, because otherwise you're spending money on a design that says, "Okay, pool in scenario A, but no pool in scenario B, so come up with four different house plans for me, then I'll pick from one of those, it's gonna cost us a lot more."
No, but don't you design the house to what you can afford?
Yes, and part of that process is deciding which features, do I want hardwood floors or do I want carpet?
If I can't afford hardwood, I don't have it.
That's all, that's all part of it.
You gotta establish a budget line that you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna use the analogy about building a house. Listen, the reality is, nobody knows what this thing is going to cost. The last presentation, I heard numbers from a two-million-dollar renovation to a thirty-million-dollar pool.
Ah.
Okay, I don't know, didn't somebody bid, or twenty million dollars, I don't know, we heard, we heard some wild numbers at the last time.
There were some wild numbers.
There were some wild, there were some wild numbers here. I, I would like to see, I'd like to see a little bit more, I, I'm in favor of doing the study, but I don't know if I'm in favor of doing the study right this second until we get a little bit more of a definition of, of what this is really going to be. I mean, we could say, does the, does the town want a community center, where does it want it? I mean, when I sat on the P O C D ten years ago, and I'm sitting on it again now, we had market research groups where people said, "Where would you like your recreation?", and they gave everybody a, a bag of, of dots, and there was maps all around the room, we did it over at Patty Bone, and people went around and said, "I'd like my recreation here", and they counted up the amount of dots, and the group of people were in favor of this. We're right in the middle of starting the plan of conservation and development. Why does this need to happen right this very second, when we potentially could do a little bit of this work in the P O C D and come up with something that's a little bit more defined, so that when we do spend twenty grand, which at the end of the night, I would be, I'm, I'm really not in favor of spending any money until I hear the last conversation we're gonna have in executive session, then maybe at that point, we can say, "Okay, we have a bit of an idea of what the town is looking for, because we've just spent these last few months in the plan of conservation and development, which by definition is the plan of conservation and development, are we developing a community center, are we conserving the land for a community center? Let's get a little bit of that together, and then wind up doing a survey that's gonna be comprehensive, and I'd like to see some numbers. Do you want a community center at Patty Bone? The base number to do Patty Bone is this, the base number to build a brand-new building someplace else is X. I'd like a little bit more meat on the bones here, or a little bit more detail, let's say, or a little bit deeper pre-qualification, if I go back to my mortgage days, of what we're actually going to spend, and what's it gonna cost us to get there before we drop twenty grand on the survey that tells us, what everybody wants to hear is, "Yeah, of course we want a, a, a community center."
Dr. Moe?
What is it gonna give us? I'm sorry, rant.
No, we like those rants.
I don't need to.
If there was a number of twenty million for a pool, I can very clearly say, "You better have an Olympic-sized pool", and when I say Olympic, I mean a hundred meters by, I think it's twenty-five meters wide.
Not fifty meters.
Is it fifty meters wide?
No.
No, no.
Regular pool's twenty-five yards.
Fifty meters by twenty-five meters?
Yes.
I think it's an Olympic pool.
Correct.
There are only a handful of them literally in the entire country, so for twenty million, you could build that, so that number's just ridiculous, so please stop saying it, okay?
And don't, just to go, I'm not against you, the pool, I'm not against it at all. The last meeting, the only reason I mentioned that number was we heard a range here that went from this long, ten to twelve, to forty million dollars.
People just throw these numbers out, and there's no information, so therefore, you really wanna build an aquatic center in this town? Depending on what you want, it'd be four to six million dollars, that's what it would be. I can, I can tell you that pretty clearly, all right? And that gets to the real point of, you need more information. When I go to work every day and I do diagnosis, I need to get as much information as I can before I start that treatment plan, and that's part of the diagnosis. It's the same thing when you're dealing with any problem, you gotta get as much information as you can get. This is a way to get more information. The P O C D is great, but you're not gonna get a ton of input from the public on that. I mean, some people will show up, but we all know how many people show up, it's a small amount. You get a better idea and a better cross-section by doing a survey like this. You know, as said before, we don't need a community center, there, there's a lot of things we don't need, you know, you, you can get through life with really minimal stuff if you wanted to. But again, if you wanna make your town better, if you really wanna improve your town, um, you know, there are things that attract people to town, number one is education, you know, that's, that's, young families coming to town, wanna see what the education is, and they wanna see how it rates against other towns in the area. You go on Zillow, you'll see how your, your school system is rated. People, when they're looking at houses, aren't gonna go a lot deeper than that. You have to do things to make your town attractive, education, recreation, just the whole appearance. We have a downtown that is better than none, so, better than all. Second to none, I got my two phrases mixed up there, pardon me.
We got it, though.
So that's why you do it, you get information, you really get a feedback from the people, and then you can go, go into the details. So this is really where we start with a concept, and the concept is getting accurate information to move forward with whatever information we get. So it's not gonna be twenty million, don't worry about that, Newtown got twenty-one million, donated to them, how much did they get?
Eighteen, fifteen.
Fifteen?
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
I'd be in favor if we got fifteen million donated.
What's that?
I'd be in favor if we got fifteen million dollars.
Somebody gave us fifteen or eighteen.
Pete, just to your point, though, your point was before you made, you made the analogy that you would dig deeper into your patient, right, to see what the root of the problem was.
Dig deep, root of the problem? I hear you're making jokes to this.
The point is, you're right, but you don't just ask the opinion of the people sitting in the waiting room, what's wrong with your patient sitting in the chair, you actually figure out by x-rays and obviously a medical history, and figuring out whether they've got the budget to do the procedure that you want to do on them. They may need crowns, and you can't do crowns, there's, you have to do some sort of temporary fix. I, I don't think there's anybody who's against a community center making this, this community better, not one person in this room, the people in the audience and the people sitting here, else we wouldn't be doing this. I, I'm in favor of doing a survey, I would like to see more work done prior to the survey, so at least we have some budgetary numbers to say, an aquatic center is a four-million-dollar endeavor, let's put that in the survey. If you had four million dollars to spend and would cost you X amount of dollars over the next ten years to do that, is that something you're in favor of? But let's give a number to that, let's give a number to a building, whether it's Patty Bone or a brand-new facility on, on a larger piece of property that we may be able to bring feels together with, and your aquatic center. I mean, I, I'm not looking at this as just some small little project, I think if we do this right, we could really build something that's gonna attract people here, I, I'm not against this at all, but I mean, I'm talking about something that's not just a little, you know, do we have a place to go have a couple of robotics meetings, I'm talking about some, maybe building something here on a larger piece of land where the feels are around it, so people don't have to drive from one town or another and not see half their families on the weekends, because they're going to one soccer field or a football field on opposite ends of the town. I'm talking about something grander, that's maybe one giant spot, that we can bring all of these, as many of these teams and feels together, as much of this facility in one spot. It may take, it may take ten years to do, it may take twenty years to do, but I think that's where we should be looking, and not just, do we need a place to have a couple of meetings? Just my opinion.
Father first, or Mike? Mike?
Mike?
So maybe the idea is to ask the committee tonight to interview three prospective survey companies.
I wanted to build your bid process. That's just my thought.
All right. Okay, okay, okay.
That's just me.
So, stop, stop, stop. So we'll do the bid process, fine, but to ask...
Wait, wait, just stop for a second.
But just to ask the committee to get the folks in front of us and say, hey, how do you do the process? What are the types of questions you ask? So that we can have an understanding, because obviously, we're not quite seeing eye to eye here.
And I just want to comment on something you said, so everybody understands. The library went through three committees over 10 years. Every single committee had a definite price. One first time was way too high, second time was much lower, and then, but there was something else coming along that I think the expenditures were decided would be better. And clearly, what you said is true. Without having any definite specifics, it's really hard to sell things. And that's why I said, my feeling was, we weren't trying to sell anything by having a market research done. And by saying, what you're saying, Tom, I understand it's your idea, but the minute you say a pool, you're putting what you think I want in a community center. So a market research study asks what the market, that's what market research is. You ask your market, what is it you feel a community center should be? What does it mean to you and your family? And maybe nobody wants a pool. Maybe they all want pool tables. We don't know, and we shouldn't presume to know. That's my point. That's one of the main reasons why I changed my thinking to the positive for this study, because we only can know what we know. And my famous saying is, there's an awful lot we don't know that we don't know. So we got 29,000 people. Let's go through a bid process. Let's get a market research firm who does this for a living, and we're not trying to reinvent their wheel and let them do it, because if we, and there's no rush, I gotta say. It took all those years for the library. So anybody who thinks this is going to happen quickly...
But, I mean, is this sample going to be more than 400 to 600 people?
It'll be what these people say it's going to be. But you're coming up with a...
400?
We don't know. We don't know.
They'll define the statistical level.
Yeah, we can't say what statistically...
It's up to them.
I'm just saying.
Statistically, if you put 400 for this town, that would be...
400 people. So fleshing it out is different avenues. I mean, to ask the question, what do you want?
You never ask that question.
No, that's not how they do it.
But that's what, but what I'm hearing is, we're trying to ask the question, what is the survey, is to ask the community what they are looking for. Is that what I'm not hearing?
Here's what I heard. If you were to communicate this and jump in here, I'm sure you guys won't be shy, is the first market researcher objective, because that's what you give the firm, you don't tell them what to ask, would be to identify the public's perception of what a community center is. Centralized, decentralized, share municipals, don't share, but identify the public perception of a community center. And then, a secondary objective would be to identify the features that most, a majority of the residents would want to see in a design. Had to think about that carefully. Now, I've been talking a lot and continuously about this idea of a conjoint analysis, but if we continue to talk further, it's probably too soon to do that. So conjoint analysis is a very specific area of market research. It's what Southwest and JetBlue did before they launched their airlines. You mix the future functionality with the cost in such a way that people can't game the system, and you really find out what they want and what they'll pay. But we probably aren't that far, because we don't have a cost estimate. But we can definitely mix and match the features and benefits, as well as the location, and probably get a statistically valid answer.
But we have to start.
And that's, and that's the starting point. You have to, you said it beautifully, you have to gather the information. Without the information, everybody just got an opinion, and we all think we're right, and we're never going to move forward. So this is actually the way to move forward, and it costs a little bit of money. I'm going to say a little bit, because in the greater scheme of things, let's say it's only $2 million, but I'd want to spend $20,000 now, I'm rounding up, on spending $2 million later and get it right versus spending $2 million and having nobody show up, because it doesn't have the stuff they want in it.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, but as you're standing now, you're talking about having two surveys. We're going to first establish what everybody's looking for, and then we're going to put a number together associated with what they like, and then we're going to go back out to that group and say, okay, now that we've figured out after this survey...
That wasn't what I said.
So, all right, well, then, but that's what it's appearing to me, if the beginning year, if the initial survey is to determine what the community is looking for, and there's no number associated with it, then aren't we going to eventually have to go back to the community again and say, this, the community likes the idea of a pool, and that number is $4 million. The community, whatever those numbers are.
So think about the library referendum question. So, do you want a library, and are you willing to spend $6.5 million in bond money? Same idea. So the second, the second round could be as simple as the referendum question, because we'll have the market research, plus then we'll have a design and a cost.
Paul?
Walter is the second.
Walter?
Hey, Walter, can I come in for one second? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is to discuss.
I'm sorry. Could you read a mo, if there is a motion on the floor, I just, Walt, if you don't mind, do you? I just want to find out.
I'm with you on that. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Katie moved a new second.
But what is the motion?
He's second.
And, and the motion is?
That we fund a market research study.
The motion is, action regarding the community center committee's request for funding of a market research study.
I'm, I'm sorry.
One more time, louder.
The shell went off over here. This is my good ear. You've got to do it again.
This was that ear. Katie moved action regarding the community center committee's request for funding of a market research study. And you seconded it.
Okay.
Talking about funding market research.
Yes.
But we don't, we don't have an amount in it? And what was the account to be taken from?
We didn't get that far. We didn't get to the amount yet.
But it's a motion.
To...
Can you help?
To accept their request.
What you're going to need to do, if you're going to fund something, is you're going to need to request a special appropriation from the Board of Finance not to exceed a certain amount of money for this purpose.
Go, wait a minute.
No, no, no. My question, I have the floor. I've been waiting patiently. Actually, Walter's on the floor.
He's talking about the motion.
Walter said yes.
He's done. My point to the people who made the motion is, earlier today, our Director of Finance said he wants to discuss our other legal line, because he can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a concern there may not be enough money.
Right.
So what account are we proposing to take this 20,000 from?
No, I meant, me, me.
No, the people who made the motion.
I made the motion. My motion was to move on the request for funding of a market research study.
So not how much, not from where?
Just to get this group to say, yes, we would move forward with that. And my only suggestion on top of it, outside that motion, was that we do it through our normal bid process. That's the motion, and that's what was seconded. There's no dollars.
So we already have dollars, because they presented us with a proposal about two months ago.
Oh, they gave us a proposal from Blue Sky.
Great blue.
No, I just wanted, we had here...
So say the bids come back at $50,000.
No.
And that's...
No, no, no.
So say they come back at $5,000.
No, we have bid renovation.
Can we first agree as a council that we're okay with doing the market? This, we've just spent a half hour talking about whether we even want to do a market research study. I don't know if we can have enough time tonight to talk about how much money we're willing to spend for it.
But isn't that what we do when we make a motion to appropriate money? It's at a dollar.
I didn't say anything about money. I didn't say anything about appropriating any money.
But how can you vote for your own?
Can we vote on the RFP? Can we vote whether or not to have an RFP? And that's open-ended, then? We can choose, depending upon the money, to say yes or no.
I just wanted to know, approve as a group, so go forward, and let's move forward with this market research study. If we do it through our bid process, that becomes an RFP. It becomes...
Okay, so, so just to be clear, the motion on the floor is to fund a market research study with no amount and no known ability to pay for said study? Just to be clear.
It's to approve their request.
No, no, I'm asking you to answer yes or no. So the motion, does it include how much money and how we would pay for it?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Just real quick, you know, these guys, we just said it, two months ago, they came to us and said we want to go to this company. Why at Ben did we say we should get bids? I mean, I'm just wondering, because you say we have all the time in the world, except that we have a building that is being pseudo-used for that, and that building needs work. So the longer we put this off, the longer we put off doing any work that building, which, with winter coming with that roof, that might be a big thing.
That's one of the reasons, Mike, because you're not able to talk about a community center without bringing in an existing building.
I know, but my point is, we're using that building. We have to make a decision at one point if we're going to do anything that building.
But that's not, this doesn't, this isn't part of that. And that's not part of this.
But your point, but you guys say we have all the time in the world, but...
We do.
Well, then, but we still have a building that needs to be maintained and knowing the cost of that.
Then we should put that on an agenda and discuss it as a council. But I don't think we need to discuss that building and what this committee has brought forward, which is about having a community center, the need for, or lack of need for a community center in our town. We need to keep those two things separate.
All right, then, we do need to start having a separate talk, because, and I know I'm biased here, but there's a list of people that want to use the lot of empty space, and we're already heating the whole thing.
Yes, you are biased, and that's, you know...
But we're heating the whole, but we're still heating the whole building, and we're not utilizing it properly.
We have 200 people in the parking lot, and we don't have any money coming in from it, if you ask Craig.
Yeah, so because there's no...
We're using this building fantastically, but nobody's paying for it.
Yeah, and, and there's, and I understand that, you know, the nonprofit's not going to pay market rate, but they are doing a service for the town, which is something...
I withdraw my motion. Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Got to withdraw your second.
Walter? I'm withdrawing the motion that I stated.
Why am I withdrawing my section, second? What are we going to do now, then?
We can go back and make another motion. So I just wanted to get this group to talk about whether we would do a market research study, and we have talked about it quite a bit. But we still have to come to a decision.
Obviously, we have.
So let's, I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to withdraw my motion, and we can make another motion that can have a maximum amount of funding based upon the outcome of our meeting with our finance director.
Oh, my goodness.
However you want it, I don't want, Paul says it's out there, it's open-ended, because there's nothing mentioned about the money. I didn't want to get into the money, because if we do it through our bid process, that would be a next step, but, so I'll withdraw.
But the motion, the original motion is open-ended. There's no request for funding there. All it's asking for is a market research.
Right, but that's upsetting, that's upsetting, Councilman Simansky.
So I'll be hard-pressed to withdraw my second. I'm in favor of this motion.
Okay.
So just to be clear, Walter, you're in favor of funding a study, not knowing how much it will cost and how we will pay for it, considering we did not budget for it?
No, no, I...
I can amend my motion.
Councilmen, I don't think that's the point. All it's given permission that we're going to hire somebody or talk to somebody to take a look at doing a market research?
I thought the motion was to fund the study, so I apologize.
I can amend the motion.
I did not get that impression.
So I apologize. I thought they said fund.
The word funding is in the way it's written.
It does say request of funding, so...
Yes, the word funding is there. Can I amend my motion, Mayor?
Can I?
Walter?
If you're second, second, prove it.
Walter, I'm going to amend.
Yes.
I'm going to amend my motion. I'm going to amend my motion.
The horse is dead on the floor here.
Say it slowly, though.
You ready? I'm going to amend it.
Go.
And I'm going to say that I would like us to move to take action on the request of the centers, community center committees' request for funding of a market research study to be done through the town's normal bid process and not to exceed $20,000. Account to be determined by the mayor and the board of, the finance director.
Second.
Question, let's ask the town attorney. Can we do that?
No. No, no. What you, what you need to do is, as a council, as the essential legislative body, you need to request a special appropriation from the Board of Finance not to exceed a certain amount of money for this purpose. You can recommend as a council what line items it's transferred fund, but the ultimate recommendation for appropriation decision is made by the Board of Finance, and if they don't do what you want, you can overrule with a two-thirds vote. But that's what you need to do if you want to fund a study.
So I should remove the mention of the finance director?
Not to exceed.
I said not to exceed $20,000.
Okay, from the Board of Finance, and it's over there.
And don't mention the mayor, then.
You, you can, but I mean, the Board of Finance ultimately could have to say yes or no.
Councilman Simansky. Yeah, I'd just like to know from the Director of Finance what his recommendation of what account it would come from.
If he can tell us that, how can he can't tell us the other thing?
I'm not sure at this point, to be honest with you.
Well, that's why I said, to be determined.
I think that you would want to wait until after executive session.
I tried that before.
I don't know if waste management would be an option. Waste management fund.
Okay.
Do you want to just table this till after executive session?
I'll just withdraw the motion. I tried that once.
Mike?
So I guess we have to wait until after executive session to make a more informed decision.
I would like to withdraw the motion.
Can we bring this back up at the next meeting after we've had this meeting? Because I don't think this executive session is going to be a quick...
Can we still get the bid process going?
Yeah, I'm not going to withdraw my second.
Matt, I've withdrawn my motion. What, what has to happen next to make somebody listen to what I said? I have withdrawn my original motion.
Can you second?
I will not withdraw my second of your amended motion.
What are we doing here? We spent a half hour on this. What are we doing here?
Only because he wants us to wait. If you want us to, can we carry it forward, Matt?
You could take, we can take it up after the executive session or whenever you want to.
Okay, then, Mayor, let's table it.
I am, I'm not in favor of it.
We're going to table, we're going to table it till after executive session. It's still on the floor. Just the floor is going to change.
You need to vote for Walter.
Walter, you need a cigarette?
Okay. I need three fingers of Jack Daniels.
After executive session, you may need six.
Okay. So just for housekeeping, for secretary.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So we had, so we had Katie withdraw her motion.
I withdraw my second reluctantly.
So now there's a motion to table?
There's no motion now.
There's no motion?
Right.
Excuse me. Walter Baer was getting ready to make the motion. Were you ready to make the motion to table or no?
I'd like to make a motion to table discussion of yes, Mr. Mayor. A second.
Is that after 13?
After item 13 on our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion to table?
I don't think such an event is, regardless of what we voted tonight, we should go, no, stop. Regardless we do tonight, we might as well go forward to getting three bids, even if we don't end it for you. We can get more bids so next time we have the actual cost...
We're going to come back after item 13.
All those, all those in favor of tabling until 13?
Aye.
Against, thank you.
Okay.
Next.
All right, item 11, public hearing. Uh, 11A.
Nope, we did not close public hearing, so number 11 is pushed off.
Yeah, that's right, that was on, so it's still open. 11B, inspection fees.
But that's still open.
Still open.
Yep, so those are, those are pushed off.
Right.
They're pushed off. Item 12, mayor's office, move to accept a resolution as presented, be it resolved that the town of New Milford may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and it's further resolved that Pete Bass, as mayor of the town of New Milford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of New Milford and to do, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents with regard to the federal fiscal year 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 13, move we go into executive session, and we want to ask Mike Zarba and John Tower?
And, Randy. John Tower's not here, he's there.
Attorney DeBella?
Attorney DeBella.
Attorney Grimes?
Abby.
And, uh, yeah, right on the question.
Yep.
Attorney Miranda?
And Mike?
Mike Zee?
Nope.
Mike Zee?
No, no.
Okay, we're back, everybody back? So we're out of executive session, no motions were made, no votes were taken. Uh, move that we return to regular session.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I suspend the rules to add an item 14 to our agenda. Motion to suspend.
Second.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, move, add appropriation from the unassigned fund in the amount of $250,000 be moved into account 1041390053101, legal extra account.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can we just ask Matt, make sure that word is okay?
Does it need to be saying anything about...
It does, it needs to be request a special appropriation from the board of finance not to exceed, session, session, amount?
I got the amount. Special appropriation from the board of finance?
Yes.
Okay, Stephanie?
Got it.
I'll amend to say it's a special, I'm moving a special appropriation from the board of finance from the unassigned fund for $250,000 to count 1041390053101, legal extra account.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now...
Back to our tabled, uh, item, which was item number 10, community center.
Move to untable it. All right, for that vernacular. Do I have a motion to do that?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And Stephanie, do we have a motion on the floor, on the table, on anywhere?
Uh, what do you think?
It was, it was rescinded, correct?
Well, you amended, uh, but I think it's not really, uh, tabled.
Okay. It was withdrawn, and the second was withdrawn by Nesea, okay. Now, Mr. Smansky, did you want to make a motion in the vernacular you would like to hear?
Uh, no, based on the fact that we just took a quarter of a million dollars out of our unassigned fund. I don't want to make any motion.
Okay.
But you can feel free to.
Uh, no, I thought you wanted to do it.
You want to leave the table?
Why can't we just wait to get some bids in and figure out who we're going to go with and go with that? I mean, if we have to, if you want to get...
I can pay for it, Mike.
I don't know.
Okay. Why don't we answer that question first?
Just because you solicit RFPs doesn't mean you have to accept one of those bids.
Correct. You're implying you are.
That's right. But in order for us...
I imply if I'm wrong, I mean.
But in order for us to go out for a bid and solicit those bids, we need to have a parameter of what it's going to cost, and we need to ask for it to come out of wherever it's going to come out of by virtue of an appropriation from our board of finance. So we can't do it in a vacuum.
So we just took a quarter of a million dollars out of our unassigned fund?
I was in.
That's money that we didn't budget for.
I was in, correct.
So whether it's five, I, I just want to get the consensus of this commission, this council, that you're okay even if it's 10 grand, when we just spent quarter of a million dollars unanticipated?
No.
And the winter hasn't even started yet.
It's not okay for me, unfortunately.
So what are you saying, Paul? You want to throw this under the bus or what?
No, not at all, Walter, I want to be fiscally responsible. The winter's just starting.
I'm not arguing that, I'm not...
You know, I'm a numbers guy, Walter, and all I ask is if people want to spend money, you tell me where you want to spend it from within the budget that we have.
Can I just interject, Walter? Let's think about this, maybe it's a bit of a compromise. So Tom mentioned the fact that we are starting on the P O C D, which is encompassing some things like this. We did just have a rather large, uh, transfer of funds. We are at that point where, uh, you know, we're almost at the end of the year, budget, new budget is starting. What if we were to table it with the idea that, but not drop it, but to look at the P O C D discussion with this light on it as well? Maybe garner something from that. And I think when the first opportunity, I mean, I can't, who knows what the first opportunity is going to be, but that we'll ever have enough money. But I think it's deserving, as I said before, that's just me, I'm only one, but I think we do need to have the market research to know anything about this. I think it is important, simply because it's got a life of its own, and we're still talking about it all this time later, and I, I don't want to dismiss that. There's a reason that we're still talking about it, and I don't think we should just throw it out.
I got no problem with the market research, if you want to, if you want to let it lie dormant for a while. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want the committee to think it's being thrown away.
No, I, I don't want to see this very...
No, I'm wanting to extend the committee, we can extend it one more time, right?
I'd like to extend the committee and see if they can give us, you know, do you have a more...
Peter, Peter has another question.
I'm sorry, unless you can give the committee clear direction, we are just yanking them around, and it is not fair to them.
I agree.
I so agree with you.
We asked them to do a job, they did the best they could, there were some problems and some parameters, I, I just don't think it's fair to them to spend any more time when we can't give them clear direction. Dr. Mullen, you might feel differently.
No. Feel the same.
Can I speak to this at all?
Yeah.
Greg?
Whoa.
Wait a second. Can we finish?
I apologize.
No, no, you're not apologizing, but I would like to finish the discussion. Let me just get something clear. If we made a motion here to approve no more than $20,000 for a market research study concerning the people's interest in a community center, we send that to the board of finance, correct? And then they choose to say the money can come from contingency, or it can come from the waste management fund, or it can come from the undesignedated, what do we call that now?
Undesigned fund.
Undesigned fund, I will keep it undesignedated. So they get to decide where that money comes from, correct?
Yes.
We recommend where it comes from.
We make a recommendation, but they make the decision, correct?
Yes, we recommend. So why don't you make the motion, recommend?
I'm, I'm getting there. I just want to make sure I get it correct. Attorney Grimes?
Yes.
What is the wording I want to say, we want to request the finance?
You are requesting a special appropriation.
Special appropriation.
Not to exceed X amount from the board of finance for whatever the purpose is, you can recommend where it comes from, where you can leave it to them to decide where it comes from.
I'm making a motion for a special appropriation not to exceed $20,000
From the board of finance.
From the board of finance, thank you. For a market research study concerning, uh, interest in, or the people's interest in what they would want to see.
Hold on, before you make a motion, though, if we want to hear from anyone in the audience, we can't do it in the motion.
Dr. Mullen has the floor.
I'm just, I, I would like to...
I'm trying to get the wording.
I think that, yeah, there are two things, to, um, define the public perception of a community center, centralized, decentralized, et cetera, and what features they would like included in a community center.
Thank you, I would like that to be part of my...
And you recommend where the funds come from, where you can leave it to the board of finance to do that.
I would like to leave it to the board of finance to make that decision.
Second.
Does that have to be in the motion to leave it to the board of finance?
I'm sorry?
Does that have to be in the motion to leave it to the board of finance or...
No, the special appropriation.
Yeah, they have a recommendation in it, and then up to the board of finance to say yea or nay, or if they say yea or nay.
Do we have to add in the point about the official RFP process, or is that inherent in the motion?
Does the board of finance have to fund this? They voted against funding.
They can turn it down, you can overrule with a two-thirds.
Peter, that's your motion, do you want to make a specific comment, or, you know, part of it to say that it go through the town standard RFP process?
Well, we don't have to do that at this point, correct?
We can go with their recommendation of gray blue.
Oh, versus, what you're saying is putting it through the bid process.
Do you want to put it in? Yeah.
I think it should go through the bid process.
So we'll add that.
We'll add the motion.
Whoever made the second, I would like to amend my motion by putting it in, that should go through the bid process.
Second. Second.
Yes, you had several, several seconds. Okay, so go through the standard RFP process.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just like to speak quickly, I'll be voting no to the motion. I was chastised by a local political committee as the charter revision chair that we were giving authority away to the board of finance, allowing them to make decisions, and tonight we're doing that by not stating an account. I think it's fiscally irresponsible. When I run for this commission, you guys know I put more time in than anyone in running the numbers. I have no idea where it should be taken from. Anyone who votes for it tonight without knowing where it should be taken from, I, I fully expect you to be at every night of the budget hearings and be providing input, because one thing that upsets me more than anything is the majority of the people not looking at the numbers, not opening their books, not knowing the numbers, but have no problem spending the money. So I'll be voting no.
Do you have a, an account you would want on there?
Absolutely not, Katie, we're going into the winter months.
Right.
We just took a quarter of a million dollars out of unassigned for an unanticipated budgeted expenditure. We have winter materials and supplies, which anyone who was part of the budget process knows or looked at it, that was reduced from what was requested by the Department of Public Works, and before the winter season and the storms have even started, we're proposing additional expenditures. I think it's irresponsible, it's only my opinion.
And I respect your opinion, because I was right there with you during budget season trying to figure out what the financials were. So I would like to recommend, and I don't know if you have to go through the whole motion again, but I say this money should come out of the waste management fund, because we have been so good about not spending that money. That money was earmarked for public recreation, things such as this, library expansion.
Which section of the ordinance says community center?
What, does it have to, doesn't it say recreation? Why is a community center not recreation?
The motion's for a community center.
Right.
Community center's just recreation?
It includes recreation. There's no, there's not recreational programs in a community center? I think your list of 231 programs that we currently offer to the community includes recreational programs.
So if it's solely recreation, the ordinance allows that?
Okay, so you're saying that waste management fund cannot be used for the community center, ever?
Public education, public recreation, a library, open space.
So there's no public education in a community center, and there's no public recreation?
In my opinion, there's other components.
And so that it's inappropriately used.
Dr. Mullen?
I thought I heard one of our town attorneys, Randy DeBella earlier, say, because I think he was sitting behind me when I heard him say it, that, um, the waste management fund would be money that would be appropriate for this. Can, may I ask the town attorney, Mr. Grimes, if he concurs with Mr. DeBella now?
I don't think Attorney DeBella said exactly that, but what I will say, what I will say is that the, one of the things you'll see in the legal opinion that I did for the community center is, community center is not defined in the statutes, and there's no suggestive language in the rest of the statutes as to what it includes. It's going to be up to the town at some point, either now or in the future, via ordinance or resolution of this body subject to town meeting, to say what a community center includes. Uh, you, the facilities, the municipal powers of the statute that talk about public facilities and public works don't speak to community centers. They do speak to, what they speak to very generally is any and all buildings or facilities necessary or convenient for carrying on the government of the municipal. So that's what it speaks to. Now, in terms of waste management, you know, that's going to be ultimately up to, up to the council as far as if this qualifies as an expenditure for the waste management.
So would you please read the ordinance?
Acquisition of land and buildings thereon for municipal public recreation purposes, public education purposes, or public library facilities. So that's the acquisition of land and buildings. I don't believe that's what this is. Construction of municipal public recreation, educational, or library facilities, I don't believe this is construction. The ac, the market research is construction?
Well, the research is to decide which direction we want to go.
But keep on.
The acquisition of land and buildings for open space, the purchase or acquisition of development rights of farm and agricultural land, and then tax relief.
Now, an interesting thing about that, there's no definition for open space either.
I think the state has to find that, but I'm not sure.
Statutorily, they have. So unless it's construction, acquisition of land and buildings.
All right, so...
They have three choices. You have a motion undesigned.
You know, you may, you may have it under secure services of engineers, scientists, environmentalists, hydrologists, scientists, or other professionals for all purposes reasonably related to preservation and protection, environmental quality, um, town of New Milford, and for all purposes reasonably related to these issues. You may get it in there, but, you know, you do not have it specifically defined as standing.
So gray zone, but your motion still stands, it's been seconded. There was my discussion point.
Walter?
I call for a vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
Did you make the motion to amend?
Dr. Mullen made the motion.
So you didn't make one to amend, it's the waste management.
Yep. Now I got shot down.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Does anybody need the motion re, re...
Re-rea?
Back to them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can you just...
Oh, interesting turn of events.
Pete, you're up.
Five, four?
Four, four.
Four, four, because Doug had to go because his tooth pulled.
Eight, that's four to four.
Didn't that go to, didn't that go to you?
Yep.
Doesn't have to.
Do we all get to hear, or is this the secret?
It's the secret.
Come on, guys, let's finish this up.
Well, unless you vote yes, we're done.
I'll vote to table it.
We're done. We're done. Before we move. Okay, you got all that, Stephanie? We have a, what do we have to do with the roads back? I do not have.
Should be, so, uh, last, uh, council meeting, you approved, uh, the ordinance with respect to the municipal roads committee. We followed all of the processes an ordinance is required to follow with it. However, because that ordinance specifically creates a new boarder commission, which it does, you need to call a special town meeting for 6:45 PM on December 10th to ratify that ordinance because it establishes a boarder commission that did not exist.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second, wait, do we get a second? I'll second.
Where's the resolution, don't leave without signing it, please.
I don't have, we don't have one.
Who's got it?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
One second before we adjourn. Mr. McBriar, he addressed the council last time about appropriating funds to the VFW for veterans. To make a very long story short, we have a private donation that Mr. McBriar had offered 30 names for one year to be into the American Legion. Private donor who has donated those funds
How about you?
To the American Legion for their first year. So I would like to thank Mr. Looney for making that offer. I think it's a wonderful thing for our veterans.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Steve. Sorry we made you wait so long to tell us.
And Pete, you got that big first?
All right, for the third time, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.